All right.
Okay, it's recording.
It is seven o'clock. We're going to call this meeting to order. Glad to see everybody face it. Let's get started. We definitely, looks like we have a forum. Morgan is on her way and she'll be here shortly. Morgan is a secretary. Do I have anyone who could take minutes until she can get here?
We take minutes.
Oh, you take minutes now? Okay, great. All right, moving to item two on the agenda, which is the approval. Consider approval for the December 12th, 2024 minutes. Everyone should have a copy of that in your packet. If you could take a minute to review those minutes and let us know if you have any changes, amendments, corrections.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Spencer Copley. Do I have a second? It has been properly moved and seconded that we approved the December 12th minutes. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item three, citizen comment period, where we open up the fourth, the citizens wanting to comment.
Hi, I'm Susan Rena. I am a resident of Kyle and I'm a member of the Friends of the Library. And I'm here tonight just to give you all a little update, I guess. I just want to say we friends are super excited about the bookmobile and I saw that's on the agenda tonight. So that's just, yeah, we talk about that at every one of our meetings. You're very, very excited about it. And our sales at the thrift store have actually been up, donations are up, so that helps. Even so much so that in January, even though they were closed for a day and a half because of the freeze, it still was higher than last year. So we're, we're very glad about that. And we're just looking forward to partnering with the library on more stuff and doing great things in the future. So you're going to see more of us around. We're going to try to be a little bit more visible than we can. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. We're also very excited about the bookmobile. Okay, thank you so much for your comment and letting us know. We're excited to have you and we will be excited to see more of you. Any other citizen comments? I don't see any. Okay, let's move down to item four on the agenda, which is staff reports and presentations. Leslie?
Good evening, everyone. You should have the PowerPoint presentation in your packet and I'm just going to go through. We, we did a lot since we've seen you last time. We missed it. We skipped a meeting and then we postponed a meeting and there were so many exciting things that happened in the meantime. The first thing is the master plan launched after the new year. We had our kickoff meeting right here in this room. In attendance were myself, Jessica, the lead from Seven Twenty Designs, Maureen or not. She is the owner, director. Amber was here, Brian Langley, the city manager was here as well. Jesus made a small appearance.
A problem.
Yeah, Brian. Which we were very grateful for. Emily McCabe sat in on it. She is our new programming and communications coordinator. She will be active in a lot of our marketing when we get to that portion of the master plan and then just helping us to promote it as well. And then Ivy Group joined us via Zoom. Ivy Group is the survey company. So they asked for a lot of information from us and we were able to provide all of that to them. It included data like our circ stats, patron visits, the logo template, the org chart, benchmark cities that we compare ourselves to, the program stats, technology inventory, seating inventory, the floor plan. They wanted all the information we could provide them from the current parks and rec master plan happening right now. So parts shared that with us as well as far as their survey and their results. And then also a market segment information that we received from the economic development. We have library tours planned for the executive team and council. On March 28th, we will go to Round Rock Public Library and then Cedar Park Library. And what we're looking at there are the buildings, lessons learned, floor plan, cost. They will share all that information with us. Seven Twenty Designs was instrumental in both of those new libraries. Cedar Park just opened up in December, I believe. Round Rock is two years old. Then our focus group meetings will happen in April. One of those dates will be all of you, library board. And those focus groups will have four different groups and there'll be two during the day and two in the evening. We'll try to capture as much info as we can from those. We have begun to survey focus questions. Those are questions of how we want to gather information from our community. We will send out postcard. The window will be open mid-May before school is out, so we can capture some of that and market to the schools. And it will go until mid-July. Little long for a survey, but we want to capture that end of school and then a lot of our summer reading, a lot of our summer attendance. And then a postcard will go out to leave every household in this zip code plus this extra as well. And that's one of the things that Emily will be instrumental in is the QR code and really helping us market that. Then our executive interviews will be the end of July, early August. Those are Maureen with two to three of the executive team and council, just one-on-one, having conversations about the library, what she found from the focus groups, what came out of the surveys. So that's the master plan. Other updates in addition, so as I mentioned, Emily started with our team the beginning of the new year. And I hope you all follow us on social and you can just see just the difference. It's, it's been amazing to watch her create some pretty amazing, vibrant, interactive, just really helping us shine. Azul Moreno began that same day as a library assistant. And then just last week, Alexandra Nandan also joined our surf team. We are shifting the collection quite a bit. Board books, early readers, easy and magazine is completed. Now we're doing what that I had mentioned to you before about the flow. So you're coming in and there are the displays. There are the board books, then the picture books. We actually also created a new nonfiction easy. So those are separate now as well. And then early readers. We've moved some shelving and that will begin J fiction, J non fic, J spamming, J graphic novels, then YA. So we'll have this kind of development of literature flow. We didn't have that before, so it's really coming together nicely. Accreditation was submitted. It's all signed and sent in and they will let us know in the coming weeks if they have any questions for us. If not, then we'll receive something. No news is good news on that one. It will receive something official in August. Cloud Link, Cloud Library contract is in process. Hoping a goal of the end of April for training and then by end of May for launch. That would add approximately over, over 500,000 digital items to our collection. That's huge. We passed the first hurdle, which was being accepted into the Cloud Link group. That's the consortium and now we have our contract in process. Library interior, the laser door counter proposals have been received and we're analyzing those to see which company we want to go with. Those are laser counters above these three doors in the lobby. We're not capturing those visits currently. The only visits we're able to capture is if you walk into the library doors. So if you all came this evening and you didn't go into the library, we're not able to capture that you were here. And these are valuable missed opportunities for us to count. How utilize the meeting spaces? How utilize the lobby spaces as well? Library interiors of Texas, we are purchasing some chairs, love seats, Makerspace tables and book trucks. That PO is in process as well. And the study room launched today. Very excited about that. It's available for checkout with the library card. It has a soft policy right now. Once we get these through and approved at council, it will have official. But it's pretty self-explanatory. Check it out with the library card and get it for two hours. The Makerspace, the painting has been completed and the carpet removal starts this Sunday. We're going to remove the carpet, scrape, and we'll have a sealed concrete floor, which will be nice for any crafts and things that go on the floor. It's landing on concrete. Most Makerspaces have a concrete floor. And then we are looking with Public Works on analyzing the space back behind here where the overflow is, that if we could get that surfaced. That would allow for additional parking on a surface versus the grass, the area. We, I hope you saw on social that we were recognized with the Library of Excellence Award. And I just wanted you to know that out of the 542 libraries in Texas, 102 were awarded. So we were in the top 19% in the state. Excited about that. And then the bookmobile update, I will go to Ohio on the 11th and check it out. Get all the instructions. Then we will have it delivered back to us here. We have a goal of just a couple week window for it to arrive. We'll do some type of launch party and ribbon cutting. We have to outfit it with all the books and all the, and our computer and wifi and all the things. We'll do a ribbon cutting, have a big fun party for it. And then we will make guest appearances around the community with it as well. So.
I have a question about bookmobile. Do you have a system or you guys have, you guys put together the collection that you're going to put on the bookmobile already?
Yes.
What was the criteria for that? What'd you guys use?
So it mirrors closely what we have in the collection. And if we don't have it, if we didn't buy it for the bookmobile, we can pull it from our collection. But Jesus is in charge of the bookmobile and it will, so if he's going to a daycare, that will determine that collection. If we're going to a park, we'll have a little bit of everything. If he's going to perhaps an assisted living facility, we will have a collection that is geared towards, so it's really going to be towards what we think the patron would be. It might be all ages and that's what we'll do. Like a big city event, we'll have all ages and we'll have the ability to find out how you can get a library card, all of our programs. But it's very determined on where we're going and it could be every, all age.
Do you know, and maybe we've talked about this before, how many books can be on the, on the bookmobile at times?
We don't because remember like an adult Baldacci book is so big and then The Very Hungry Caterpillar is not so much. And but, but with The Very Hungry Caterpillar, we might have more displays out. So it's all a learning experience for us to what a book truck holds of one age isn't necessarily what it holds of another age. We also are going to have a small area selection of items that are available for free. They're not, they don't belong to us. They've been donations or something. So that if you didn't have a card, we don't turn anyone away without leaving with something. And those will be all ages as well.
Anyone have any questions or about the dress report? All right. Well, I think it's safe to say we can move to the item five on the agenda, which is consider impossible action on recommendations to the city council regarding the public library policies. So this was sent out earlier this week to us and it's a pretty thick packet. Some of these we've gone through many times.
You recognize some of them?
Some are new, so.
Interesting, a quick question. Yes, city staff, make sure you understand your intentions. As they were said, they, if you wanted to have this on the council review and you want this to be done at one time, or are you open to piecemeal over time? What's your preference and thoughts there?
It's this evening, all, all of the packet next Tuesday's count. Thank you.
So I thought what we could do is, as you can see in your packet, we provided an index. So I thought we can just go through each individual policy. I'm not going to read them out. Has everyone had a chance to look them over? So I thought we can go through each individual policy and the subject headings and we can just, if y'all have questions, present it that way. Real quick, as y'all know, we only have two official policies. The collection development policy and the exhibit and display policy. Our other policies that we had are really just internal procedures. So this packet's going to present to y'all those two official policies with some amendments. And then it's going to also present to you other policies that will just help us operate as a functional public library. And let's go ahead and start with this, oh, this policy packet also has our mission and vision statements. And I don't know if y'all have seen our, is it our mission statement or our vision statement right now? It's very lengthy. It's, it's a paragraph. And it doesn't need to be that lengthy. So we have put it into a very nice sized sentence. And the mission statement is to facilitate access to information, inspire learning, enrich lives and encourage community engagement. And our vision is to be a vibrant hub of opportunities for lifelong learning. I just love that. And let's go through our library use policy. This library use policy will create rules for limited public forums, general expectations, children in the library, animals, food and beverages, attire and hygiene, sleeping, smoking and tobacco use, restrooms, personal belongings, personal behavior and violations. Anybody have, after reading through it, anybody have anything that popped their eye that we haven't discussed yet?
Is there a global question for the entire packet? At least related to the use of the word customer?
Yes.
I'd like to learn more about how we landed on that word because I know it's something we debated.
Yep. Oh, we did debate that between patron and customer. Patron is just, hmm. What's the word I'm looking for? Yes.
As a city department, a lot of our, a lot of our adjacent departments use customer service in their, in their, their mission. And it just makes it, everything shell a little easier when we're all talking about customer service. It's really easy for our staff to understand. And we love patrons. We love library patrons, the term, but it's really library jargon. And so this enables us to talk about other people.
And many times people think a patron is a library card holder. And a customer is everyone who walks into any event, our building, the bookmobile, they are all our customer. And I like that customer service versus patron. Good question.
Yeah.
Uh, this is just like a medical issue on item eight, smoking and tobacco use. Is it tobacco?
Someone brought that up after. I was like, item eight.
Guess we have two notes on this. Starting out, I'll start with the starting out section two, part A, the staff member may not modify or reiterate the policies. Leslie, I know we've had debates every time about the value of discretion from the library director. That language is very clear cut, that there is no discretion that's authorized in these policies. Do you feel that you're able to administer the library properly without the ability to have discretion on these policies?
Go ahead.
So this one, we specifically say the staff member and not administration. So it doesn't put frontline staff in a position where they feel like they might feel forced to waive the policies in the situation. At the end of the packet, it does say considerations about policies can be directed to library administration.
And then a note for consideration, not recommending any kind of change in language, but just that we, you're tracking for future implementation, that's something that is to occur. Section, what's that, 10, 11, 13, denial of physical access to the library. Part two, any single violation of section 11B, that is inclusive of access to sexually explicit material in library theaters or personal private devices. Just wanting to note that the way that that's defined could have implications for the future. Not recommending modification right now, but just however the term sexually explicit is defined during council.
Thank you.
I have a, I guess maybe a recommendation or an ask to review the language under a limited public forum.
Which section?
Section one. I don't, the way I interpret this when I read it, I don't think it actually means what it was meant to mean the way it's written. And the, and the, and it's just that it's really the second sentence. The library can impose restrictions on expressive activity in a limited public forum if they are not reasonable and viewpoint neutral. So they, I guess is referring to expressive activity. So we're saying if the expressive activity is not reasonable and viewpoint neutral, then the library can impose restrictions. I don't know if it's supposed to read that way. It could. But if, I mean, does everything in a library have to be viewpoint neutral?
No, but I think it's the expressive activity that needs to be viewpoint neutral.
I, I like went down a wormhole with this for like with this sentence. And I, and I think maybe if we put disruptive somewhere, like a disruptive expressive activity, like you're disrupting the library. That I think it might work, or we just need to move some words around and maybe some.
If the activity is not reasonable, sad, what, what you're looking towards instead of they?
Yeah, I think it's, I actually, what do I have down? I wrote down like a, I have a some language that I wrote down and y'all let me know if it sounds right to y'all. I said, the library is a limited public forum. As such, the library may impose restrictions on disruptive expressive activity, provided the restrictions are reasonable and viewpoint neutral.
Okay, say that again.
The, the library is a limited public forum. As such, the library may impose restrictions on disruptive expressive activity, provided the restrictions are reasonable and viewpoint neutral. It's, it is. It shift, it shifts it, but it shifts to where that, it shifts the viewpoint neutral on the restriction, saying like you can't, you, you, you can restrict actions, but you can't restrict the action based on its viewpoint alone. That's the way it reads now to me.
I would agree that it feels dicey
Okay.
to like that on library staff to have to decide to, to, to arbitrate, litigate what is viewpoint neutral enough and inherent in expressive activity is a viewpoint. And so then what is that line? Like I, just reading it, I don't know what that line would be. It's something to be not reasonable, viewpoint neutral. But the disruption, I think is a threshold.
Gate speech.
But that's not necessarily obvious. And I think that the spectrum of response to expressive activity could be really different depending. Things can be a flashpoint. Things can be activating or triggering, but that doesn't necessarily, would not necessarily mean that it would be unreasonable or unneutral, not neutral. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So we just need to revisit this language to kind of clarify. Because the whole point of this particular one is to establish that the library is a limited public forum. Like that's the whole point of this section. So we just need to clean that up, clean that up a little bit.
I think it's important. I think, I, I love that it's in here. I think it's important. And maybe we need to define what it is because it doesn't define what a limited public forum is.
I thought about, yeah, we thought about that when we were discussing it of like, people might read this and not actually know what a limited public forum is.
Yeah.
So maybe the definition will
It might help, yeah.
Okay.
And just revisiting it in form with your timeline, Leslie, on council.
Yes, because I think so because what we can do is edit, edit slightly and our city attorney will still have to sign off again, even though you all approve, given city attorney, I mean, can they do that?
Yeah, I think, I think it'll still need the timeline. Tonight you could approve with modifications and you would suggest that that be modified to reflect the discussion that was had. And we can, when then we'll present that to the city council. It's like, here's our suggested language. It's been approved by the city attorney. It came from a recommendation of the board, just to clarify.
And we took notes, Christina, of your suggestions. So that, that's why Jesus raises. Thank you for bringing that up. I need, could anybody else see anything the library use? Are we ready to move on? Okay. So that was not too bad. The library use is always one of the hardest ones. And it probably takes the longest to try to pinpoint everything, so.
I do have one more.
No, that's
So much about how you came to land on 10 years of age for sleeping.
Which, where's that at? We landed on 10 years of age because we were thinking of parents that are working on the computers, watching their kids and their kid is like falling asleep, taking a nap. And 10, I know 10 might seem like, oh, it's a little old, but you, you never know. And we also have it, is it 12 that you have to be in the library? You can't be in the library by yourself until you're the age of 12. And so 10, you're still under your guardian. So your adult would still be here. So if you were, if you were napping as a 10-year-old while your guardian is here.
And should that be 12 for sleeping? In that way, that's the threshold of you're supervised by an adult. Your actions are under that adult responsibility and care taken. And if your parent allowed you to sleep, that's fine. If you're over 12, you're on your own. You're governing.
For consistency purposes?
It does come in a weird spot for 11. That's fine.
We can, we can change it so it keeps it consistent. So
Under the
Under the age of 12. Um, no, over the age of 12. That's like a customer.
So 11 and under.
Okay. Yeah.
Over the age of child, even the age of 12. We keep it consistent. We're hoping that's like 130, right? That the child under the age of
A child, yeah, rather than customers. So a child.
The next section of the policy goes over membership and library The next section of the policy goes over membership and library cards and it will cover the registration process. The library card types, renewing library cards and lost or stolen library.
I know we had talked before under section one about applications must register for library membership in person at the Kyle Public Library. Of expanding that to also include the book. That way you can have the ability to do registrations while actively servicing the community in the community. Was there an intentional choice to revert back to the more restrictive in-person application?
So we'd um have discussed how the bookmobile is just an extension of the library. And so when it is out in the community, it is like a mobile branch. So if you're getting a card on the bookmobile, it's basically an extension of the library. So that's why we went back to at the Kyle Public Library, because when that bookmobile is out servicing the community, it is. An extension of the Kyle Public Library.
I understand that response. I would take a different view of how the language reads. But if that's implementing guidance from the director on staff, I can understand that that's a stancy take.
Is there, are there not, um, there, there are also events though that you all use as like register, library card registration drives. So that's like in the park and.
We actually don't.
Oh, no? No, because.
We have the library card registration, um, but we don't actually come, uh, complete the process. Out at the booth.
So they'll make a form.
They have this form and then they bring it back to the library to complete it.
I think there are a couple constraints on the resources, just because a lot of times it's only the, the outreach librarian. The community engagement librarian at the event. And so while we're busy trying to drum up uh. Attention for our table, um, library card process, for the library card making process can take a couple minutes. Um, at the very worst case, where you get a family of library cards that you have to make. And then so you're just not attending to the rest of the event. If in the future we can scale up and add some more support, I could totally see that we could make library cards without affecting the rest of the operation.
And we've gone back and forth about the library cards on the bookmobile because it does require. Time with each individual and there'll be many times where it's potentially just one person. And so we'll be giving information about how to uh obtain membership, but not actually. Obtaining the membership in the library. So we will get there and maybe we'll get to a point where we have enough staff, but there's always two or three at the event. And then one person is designated for issuing cards.
And I certainly recognize, we'll get to it later, the privacy statements and policies. That there were implications with how to effectively register, requiring photo IDs and maintaining patron.
Right, when we are out on a bookmobile, on a wifi device, we have to. We have to go through those motions in security first and foremost and then. And a lot of times people may or may not even have the proper documentation and then we're turning them away. So it's just really nice to give them an opportunity to say, you can join and now you'll need to come to the library. And uh, and that's very common. There, for a long time, we're digital cards, some places, some libraries allow you to just sign up for a, something online. We're not there to be able to do that.
So with that one, um, the only suggestion I could think of is with the Kyle Public Library. If that is something that we feel strongly about. With, instead of at. So applicants must register for library membership in person with the Kyle Public Library.
That would allow then if we are able to have secure lines and do a bookmobile or an event. That you're with us versus.
Thank you, Spencer.
I have a couple. One is here, take four. So um item twelve on list A and item three. On list B, I think that's what I'm saying.
Item twelve on list A, the enhanced library card. Item, what was that? I don't know.
Oh, three, it repeats itself, so yeah.
My clarification about. If I'm reading the paragraph correctly, if you have A, then you're good to go.
Yes.
If it's valid.
If it's, if it's valid. And not expired.
Some of these in that category, I don't know if they have.
Yeah, passport does not have your.
Is it under the?
It's under column A on its own.
Yeah, which is the accepted photo identification. You have to have. The way I read this is you have to have something from A and B. So like if your driver's license covers both of that, you're fine.
Oh, without a res- without an address, right.
And then if you have the passport, that would be your photo identification and then you need to select something from section B. To show your residency.
No, no, I understand. I know that we talked about it a lot because that is very similar to a paragraph that we debated back and forth. But like, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Got it.
I'm rereading it.
Cause it says with proof of current residence from list A.
Official document must be maybe provided to validate an expired accepted photo ID or photo ID without a current physical address.
Right. So the passport would not have. B, then it would be, you could put the passport on B because it would be the photo ID that puts up for. The address in list A.
What if we rework this in a way? When it is, you have to have a valid ID, exact valid accepted photo ID with proof of current residence. Through any combination of documents through a simple, and that way you can get rid of A and B. And as long as you have some combination of documents that proves your identity by a photo and verifies your address. If that's a driver's license, it accomplishes both of you that one, you know, it's a passport and a utility bill. That's two documents. We don't really care what combination of A versus B. You just need those two things, look at the list below, bring any number of them in, and that would accomplish the goal. And maybe avoid some of the confusion that we have debated at nauseam.
I, I like that idea, but I think that may actually create more confusion. If someone comes in, for example, with their bank or credit union statement and says, this has my name and my address on it. So this is I, then, then, then someone at the front desk is gonna have to say, oh, no, that's not a photo identification.
And that we would just be qualified though to be photo ID and proof of address. Whether it's, you know, one thing like your driver's license or just as long as the statement says you're a photo and a proof of address.
Instead of with.
Right.
Physical valid accepted photo ID and proof of current, current residence.
Okay.
So passport needs to be moved.
Where's the passport?
It's under an A and it would not have valid uh address.
But with that change, we get rid of A and B, yeah, we can just have one big list of fans.
Um, a bank or credit union statement cannot be. So tell me again what you're, what you're proposing.
It would need that you'd have an original physical valid accepted photo ID and proof of current residence. From the list below and it would be everything. And so they could bring in their complete credit union statement, but they would have to produce a.
The passport photo.
Okay, alright.
I think we need to choose to call Kyle Public Library or Library. Because we're mixing it up and it's not consistent throughout the first uh, the library use policy. And then the membership and library cards. Sometimes we call it the full name and other times we call it just the library. And I think it becomes a little bit more confusing in the membership because there's a lot of um terms in here that are capitalized. And so it's kind of confusing because I don't know that they're capitalized because it's the name of a thing, right? They, they, uh, there is a section where you have something not capitalized. So that is the name of a policy, but not other things are not. And so it's just um.
So go through and where it just says library, um, for consistency purposes, change it to Kyle Public Library. When that's what we're referencing.
I mean, if that's.
Right.
If that's what y'all are wanting to do.
Okay.
Cause I think when we had discussed that previously, if you don't want it, cause it's a lot of work and it can be a twister, right?
Yeah.
If you're gonna use it the first time and in parentheses, say library, and then from there on, that's what you call it. But then at least you have identified it.
Okay.
I think we start with Kyle Little Library and then library in parentheses thereafter. Always known as library applies to.
So start with each document, right? Cause each document has this standalone.
Did anybody else see anything jumping out of them?
I'm doing good, y'all.
Okay, the next policy in.
One more. And it actually pertains to future policies.
Yeah.
In which in future policies, you refer to a class of customer that's in good standing. And we do not define the standing anywhere else. I would imagine that that ties into the membership. But uh, I'm certainly open for feedback or recommendations.
Should I just?
Yeah.
We've talked about that before. We haven't got found good standing.
Let's see, I used people F and good standing is found in five places in this document. Is it hotspots? Which is the next section, actually, policy. The wifi hotspots used twice, it comes in good standing for book renewals. Um, study rooms using good standing and. Teachers for. Make your space uses good standing.
So we address um and sec- the sec- the third, the third policy circulation, we address blocked accounts. So if a account isn't blocked, it would be in good standing.
Would it clarify the language to say active account as opposed to a blocked account?
No, because an active account means that it is non-expired to us. That means it's a live account. It just has something going on that's, the block means it's stopped from checkout.
And that is distinct in your mind through good state. And then you could be active and not in good state.
Correct, because a- and you could be also not in good standing and expired. But it's, it's a circulation statistic, so let's say you're blocked. But I have a count of how many members, everybody, everyone activists, everyone not expired is in that number.
Would you nominate providing guidance on what would qualify to not stop?
Overdue.
Under blocked accounts, if we go to the um third policy circulation. Uh, these are blocked accounts. These are accounts that would not be in good standing. Um, there are overdue items on the accounts and it blocks it. And so when an accountant is blocked, you're not able to check out any other materials. So therefore it wouldn't be in good standing to check out other materials and that we unblock it.
So it means that of good standing, we use the term blocked account since we define it. So we.
May not have a blocked account.
Yeah, you may not have a blocked account.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I missed. How's that different than what? It's just.
Cause you, but you can still have an active account, but it's falsely blocked.
Because you can come in and pay your fines and you can't take active too literal as like there's activity on it. Because there actually, there is, there's a, a standing balance, if you will. So it's a, it's a membership we still count versus an expire. So you could be blocked. But your card is active, it's ready for you as soon as you take care of whatever's blocking. But it's not expired. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the equivalent, the, the opposite of active is expired. You either, you have an active card or you have an expired card and it's lost is a different tier.
Right.
Okay.
And block is synonymous with bad standing or not good state.
Just not in good standing.
And so if we change the good standing everywhere, well, the policy should just be not blocked. Would that accomplish the same thing?
I believe so because it means you have a balance on your account.
Well, blocked accounts also cover um accounts that are expired.
Which means.
They need to come in and they need to, um, if you have an expired account, you still have to come in and you still have to take care of an issue. The issue would be your card is expired and we need to see your address and um driver's license again to verify that you still live in Hayes County. Um, and then that would take care of that unblocked account, account and put it back into good standing. So a blocked account basically means there's an issue on the account that needs to be taken care of and addressed. So that way you can access resources again.
And when we read statistics, we can look at active with a debt on it, blocked or expired. Which is also a way for them to be blocked, but we're looking at expired versus.
I think it would probably be easier just to use block if, or either blocked or not blocked. Instead of good standing in this document, cause if we're, I mean, we'd have to add a whole nother section that explains what good standing is. And we could just change, we could just control find.
I think, I think in good standing is a library term. It's just, it's our terminology of.
It doesn't sound as aggressive.
No, it does not.
So I, I hear, my concern is that when we started this conversation, this is. Okay, um, mentioned that we're changing the term patron to customer to be more inclusive to a non-library office. And I hear from the last statement that good standing is better for the opposite.
Well, no, I'm saying it's a term we use and that's why it's good for you all to look at these as well. Because we get, just like anyone in your industry, you know your terms and those are the ones you use. And then we, it's not that we forget, we just need.
We become very.
Become used to them and then, so if we're using jargon, you, we absolutely need to be reminded. Absolutely.
Could I suggest that in section three in membership and library house that? Um, the statement cardholders must resolve account issues prior that you use instead of blocked term. It's just a suggestion. And then renewing cards.
Must resolve account issues prior to renewing. Must resolve.
I just think if you have a blocked account, you, you shouldn't be able to renew unless you fix whatever the problem is. I think anytime we talk about an issue with an account, then we should just continue to use that same terminology.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
You mean like it could read cardholders must resolve blocked account issues after or? How are you seeing that?
Blocked account status is resolved. I don't know, I was on for it, no, it blocked account.
Blocked account status is resolved.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I just like it to all go back to block.
Yeah, I agree since.
Yeah, I agree since it's defined.
I'm overdoing. I noticed that automatically people's due dates would be changed to a different date. Um, so how long do you give this before it becomes overdue?
Let's see.
Perhaps the grace period is. I hope I'm not, you already know the grace period is not something that we publicize because it's a it's a courtesy, library courtesy. And it's it's easy to set it in the system, but we don't tell our patrons about a grace period because then why not just change the the due date for everyone?
And that gives you the flexibility, noting that staff does not have discretion in these policies, library director does, if it's not codified, therefore there's no discretion given by staff. Is that fair?
I think that's fair.
It's excellent.
I use the most flexibility without.
I see. Are we moving on to circulation?
So really quick, um, um, membership.
Yes, membership, okay.
Number two, library card types B.
Okay.
Uh, non, uh, I think we need a one and two, the second sentence, non-resident library cards are valid for one year. I think that should be number one. And then the number one should be two.
Oh, thank you. So it's under library card type. And then non-residence fee. And then um right under where it says Kyle Public Library fee schedule period, it's number one, non-resident. Library cards are valid for one year. Number two, not resident, library cards are issued to applicant.
But in type um in item A, the two-year ballot is not available. It's just a part of the. The sentence, the the structure. I think you can just make that a, they could have one, two, have three, but B would only have one and two.
I think you have to separate it underneath each.
Okay.
So we'll have a one, two, three under A.
Yes.
And then a one, two under B.
And then the next section is the circulation section. The circulation section is going to establish. Rules and guidelines for checking out items, blocked accounts, account limits, loan periods, hotspots, reserves, renewals. Returning items, fees for lost or damaged item. There you go.
In a quick confirmation, we referenced first time the Kyle what, sorry, Kyle Public Library be scheduled. And my impression is that it's going to be set by council and city leadership. Um, it is separate from these policies with the intention that we updated as deemed to be by council.
Right, yeah.
Well, my link around this actually is a small form, any issue of item seven and eight, the alignment is different.
Okay.
See what I'm talking about, right?
That aligns. I think I spent like a whole day. I was like, why?
Format is difficult.
There's a sticky note on my desk that has the different um indentment spaces. And so it's like when you're doing A, this is what it should be when you're doing one.
Number two for blocked account. But.
Yes.
Are those individual items that can be added blocks account for all three things must be present.
They're individual.
Okay.
So if um someone has overdue items on their account, it can be blocked. If there's unpaid fees, it will block it, or if it's expired, it will block it.
Okay, so it's that primary materials may not be checked out if any of.
Yes.
I don't know, this is, okay, so section three, account limits. Section three B, Kyle Public Library tech share cards can have a maximum of five items checked out. Does this have? Any referral back to the overarching policy of tech share card?
The um, the one by the state.
You mean?
So the state allows each public library to choose how many they want to lend out the um tech share users.
Okay.
And what?
And what?
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Is that section though better accomplished by referencing the restricted materials on page forty-three of our packet? That way, if the library expands, innovates, has more materials that should not be circulated. That we just add into this section versus adding it to this section and the tech share.
That's for the interlibrary loan policy, so it's a different.
Oh, yeah, for the tech share.
We'd have to add.
The next, it could go here with this.
We'd have to add another line, because this is the interlibrary loan policy and it's being restricted, so we'd have to add this to the tech share line as well and. You see what I'm saying?
That's not interlibrary loan. Account limits is still under circ.
He's referring to.
Are you on circulation three with account limits B? Or is somewhere else?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're on uh, it starts on page seven.
Mm-hmm.
And then the next page is account limits. This is really, could be in the tech share portion. It's not interlibrary.
Yeah, he was saying, would it just be better to reference the restricted?
In the tech share.
The restricted items and the tech shares.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't see. I don't see restricted items in our tech share part of policy. It's in the interlibrary loan policy. We'd have to add that section.
So let's add more publication then. The tech share policy. Section three, hard fee. Borrowing limit, funding duration, amount of account with library circulation policy. The circulation policy just looked at, does. Anything to the same word.
And this circulation policy references. There's a maximum of five items and that these, uh, and these items, laptop hotspots and digital content cannot be checked out. Move B, so we could remove B and put it under text fair card as for. And add a section for restricted materials.
And we're through the section in our library law policy.
So if I understand. Circulation policy. Section three B, Alpha Library Tech Share Cards can have a maximum of five items checked out at one time, here.
Yes.
Tech share card, a new section will be added in theory four. That mirrors restrictive materials of interlibrary loan policy.
Yes.
Like, there's another question, ready? Is there um? Are you reaching an upper order of uh within each section? So for example, I feel like hotspot is in a really weird place in the circulation policy. It comes before things like renewals and returning items. When it is like a very specific thing like.
It's not flowing.
Yeah, it kind of just like breaks up the circulation policy and it's awkward.
Not good circulation.
We can make it.
I would suggest moving it later into the policy so that things like reserves, holds, renewals can be more defined.
Move two, after returning.
Also the only thing listed in here that's like its own thing. Just a note.
Yeah.
There's nothing else that we really have. On with that even a Chromebook.
It's um. We wanted to make sure that we really. Wanted to put it in the policy just because of the price associated with the hotspot and it's not not so much the device, but the service attached to it too. Um, whereas a Chromebook is also, can also be pricey, but we're not having to pay for that internet service. And so that's why we wanted to make sure the hotspot made it into the policy.
Interesting.
Just making its own policy.
It may, there's also an uh agreement that they signed that is as an individual. Procedures as well with that. And it does have to do with because um there is a subscription assigned to it, its value is higher. And we also with the uh. The content that may be accessed with it, so there was that. As well.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any other questions or see anything else about circulation policy?
Okay, do you? Or um. I don't know. See, the public library does not accept replacing copies for lost or damaged things. And then like right, I know what you're trying to say, but then like right after that, you say that you you might consider it, so. Maybe the.
Thank you.
Maybe the public library staff cannot accept replacement copies. It's let's just like changing it a little bit, so it's not, the library will not, the library staff cannot do this. And then the recourse like D is library administration may consider exceptions, but to say we do not do it and then immediately.
Instead of the.
Yep. Tech share card, let's look um, go over the purpose of the tech share card. Obtaining a tech share card from the Kyle Public Library and using a tech share card from another library.
With the addition of.
And then we'll, and then number four will be um the restricted materials.
Like reference with the way that we formatted is to reference the restricted materials section of that next policy. That way in the future. You change one thing versus on every policy, but I mean, have to defer to.
I'd be moving, I liked adding it. Sure, it's working.
Okay, the next policy is the interlibrary loan policy. We have um a statement time, I'm describing the purpose of it. The eligibility, borrowing materials, lending materials, and then restricted materials. Cost and fee, damaged or lost in our library loan material. It continues.
I suggest from section two B to change customer to bar.
To B. Let's see. You said two?
Maybe.
Two B.
To B.
Yeah.
Ability and because it's naming specifically resident, non-resident, we're implementing card holder would be more.
In section two A one.
A one, okay. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Resident, resident, just card holder. And it's like, I didn't see it.
What? Yeah, it's a card holder, yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
I'll have a question on what priority. The public library will prioritize the distribution of materials. To customers on a priority basis.
So this is whenever um we lend materials to other libraries that are requesting it.
Yeah.
And so if we notice that's um with this priority basis, because. We, how do we describe this interlibrary loan system? We'll get requests from other libraries. If we notice they've requested a book. That's um is popular and it might be on the shelf for us right now, but we know it's not going to stay on the shelf for very long. Because we've noticed a pattern of it circulating pretty frequently, then we won't fulfill that request. Then our customers will take a priority over that request.
So it just came back, but there's an ILL on it, something very popular, just returned to us.
Mm-hmm.
Then we see there's an ILL on it. We can deny that ILL because that's what we we can predict, that's going to be something our patrons.
Okay.
That we'll want to keep. And that is the, and inside the agreement with our interlibrary loan.
Okay.
State.
Okay.
Uh, through the state library is we have that right to decline, saying, no, this is actually, we want to keep that.
Okay. Bye, thank you.
So I agree with the recommendation that you made about the card holders. Both once we start maybe changing just like that to the face others. Um, so you may want to look at tech share test floor under two. Indeed, because it calls that your customers there, so you want to do the card holder there.
Okay, where are you at on tech share?
For your uh.
Two.
Two.
Customer may request.
So you start with customer may request. I was going to point that out too because. Not trying to go back because y'all are making recommendations, yeah. On page seven. For the larger types. You're calling them applicants. So I think once. They say their card holders are card holders or is there difference, so.
That was intentional, that applicant one. Um, because they're applying.
They're applying.
And they haven't.
In the process of.
Yet.
In tech share, though, I think she's correct, because you can't just be a customer, you can be a.
Yeah, yeah, those are, yeah, the distinction, they're distinction there.
So it's tech share two A. Card holder B.
Thank.
And then. Yeah.
Two A could be customers, but she may not.
No, you can't, you can't request a tech share card to be used at a library if you're not a public, if you're not.
Calling them applicants.
Okay, so are we through interlibrary loan now? To patron confidentiality.
So patron confidentiality. It's just a general policy explaining what patron confidentiality is. I know.
While we're noodling on that question, it seems bigger than this room. Um, I know that child, youth cards are associated with parent. In situations where another parent of that child asks, can you show it to them? If it's attached to.
If it's not attached to that.
Yeah, if it's not attached, it has to be the um parent it's attached to or the guardian it's attached to.
Okay, so similarly, if my son has a card and it's tied to me, can I view what my child has shut down?
Yes, because you're ultimately responsible for what he's reading.
If both parents are attached to a card.
If both parents are connected to.
Full access to that.
Right, yes.
So I want to jump back, do we want to change that to customer confidentiality?
To T M, just since we've taken patron.
And the policy itself uses library customers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just to take it a step further, once a child becomes an adult, they move to their own life. And then they only have access to their.
At eighteen.
Eighteen.
The next policy is the internet computer use policy. It has our general policy explaining what it is. And the prohibited use, security and privacy, and wireless access.
Section two prohibited use, number four invading is capitalized.
No. Do you want to say anything else or have any questions?
The confirmation question, section two. Under prohibited use this, all of those pertain specifically to the harmful display of materials to minors, correct? Just wanted to make sure that accessing a peer-to-peer network for work purposes or other lawful use is still authorized. That's just tied specifically to protecting the tier, right? Thank you. And a note for way in the future, this is still infancy, this stage. I would imagine that we want to put something about A I inside of this policy at some point. I don't know what that is. Just play it for discussion.
Absolutely.
The next policy is the collection development policy and we've already presented this one to council. And so this one has a couple of amendments. And the first one was changing the language concerning the number of positive reviews required from a credible professional source. And it stated at least two positive reviews and we want to change that to selections require positive review and credible sources. And then the next change is this establishing more defined criteria for those who can request reconsideration of materials. It was um a library card holder and we want to change that to resident card holders with accounts older than six months. Because um as of right now, anybody in the state of Texas can get a library card, which means anybody. And there's no time limit for how long you have to have that library card, so you get a library card and then put in a request for reconsideration of materials. And we want to make sure that we are focusing on the area we serve. Um and we do take it seriously. We had a reconsideration not that long ago that we investigated. And uh we.
I have a question on. Changing from two reviews down to. If the intention is to make sure that the materials in terms of circulation are true, valid, credible, authentic, whatever determines what it happens. Reducing down to one from two. Would substantially widen the population of materials to enter circulation. Good, bad, or otherwise. That exists. And I think I'm wanting to understand why it was deemed that one was a.
Okay, so I'll. Okay, so in this one, we find a great number are reviewed by school library journal. And your other reviewers don't necessarily review it because it's specifically for school-aged children. Or we'll see Kirkus come out with a strong starred review. And then we won't see another. And so we're, the selectors are looking very closely at those reviews. And when it's a school library journal, it's good with us. If we don't see another, maybe it has a review, but it's not, it just says something very vague and many of the times these do. That is enough for us to move forward. When it doesn't have anything, that's alarming. When it doesn't have any reviews. And our vendor in Ingram is very good down in the reviewed area. They'll do a synopsis of starred reviews and list them for us. And then it's very easy to see many, many times there are two to five uh solid reviews. Wouldn't you say you see Ingram as well? But but many times we would see just the school library journal do a book, uh review a book that specifically we think would be good for those school-aged children. That's what I felt that was really geared towards our school-aged children.
I certainly hear and respect and find accurate, but that change would reduce the time to bring in good quality material into circulation. They up require two sources to back up before it could enter the bloodstream of the line. I would just know as well for consideration and thought moving forward. I'm not going to fight any change there, just want to make sure we have an open session of. I think we're also in an age where I'll call it content moderation is out the door. And it is easier to be verified as a credible source in the eyes of somebody, whoever it is. And it may not be true. And having two is a protection against that. It is, these are equities that I don't think we have the answer for, but they should be discussed.
Leslie, you're saying though that sometimes it might only get a review in the school library journal and no other review. So it's limiting.
Limiting good stuff, especially that might be part of the curriculum. Now, if it's the latest Bluebonnet award winner, then we'll start to see more reviews drop in, but maybe it just didn't get a reviewer attention. And there's so many books published that only so many reviewers can be looking at these items and and give them a review. And so what it does is allows us as selectors to to purchase a book that only has that one review, but we see its value to our collection. And what I'm really talking about the most are the children's books and they're the the school-aged children's.
No, I'm not lying. And um it's so it doesn't happen often, um just kind of piggybacking off of what Leslie has stated. It doesn't happen often, most of the books we select will have multiple reviews. It really is, it really does come down to when we are looking for those nonfiction books. We're talking like not juvenile nonfiction, we're talking those easy introduction to a topic, nonfiction books. Um and they're great and um they are usually um published by a reputable publisher. And it really will come down to because of the fact that it's published by a reputable publisher and because it's geared towards five to seven-year-olds, like it is only going to be reviewed in the school library journal. Kirkus Reviews is not picking it up to review it.
Like a D K book on whales. We're not going to have a lot of reviews. And so we are very careful with that, that one, but um it it we've, we wouldn't be able to find two, just just not too reputable reviewers would look at it.
And we still have the other criteria too that help us make sure we're adding really um valuable stuff to the collection. But.
I hear you. I'm happy to move on to the next topic unless there's other discussion on that one. Um the other item is understanding under section, uh sorry, under section six about changing it to accounts older than six months. Understanding the intention of wanting to serve child and the customers that are actual card holders for our library and giving them the fair weight in these reconsideration questions. What stops me, my, the hypothetical bad act? I walk in, I get a library card, I walk out. And six months later, I come in and file a complaint of whatever, whatever reason that we're going to assume is bad thing. If I've not checked out any books, any materials, done anything in the library, am I truly a member of the community? I would agree in the policy to say yes. I also don't know if we put any more stipulations on, you have to have actually checked out books or or taken in the activities of a library to really go in. Um is that enough protection of the ready to?
It does say check out.
Check out history. And that is interpretive, but what it, what it what it discourages is there is a movement of folks who go from library to library. They walk in, they get a card and immediately, or maybe don't have to have a card because it's not in the policy. They will submit the reconsideration and they will travel the state in groups and do that. And what we've made sure with this is we say that you do have a card, that you've utilized your card in those six months. And then, yes, you may come to us with a reconsideration. Think that helps with dissuade the movement of of that. There's a lot of libraries that have had reconsideration of people. It's the same people that submitted a form at all the neighboring libraries as well.
On number one, B, probably phrase that to get rid of um B one. Because typically we don't have just one number under a, as a list. So maybe responsibility for material selection are fully, fully meant responsibility for, so you may get one second.
I'm sorry, where are you in here?
Page fourteen.
Okay.
One.
Oh, just to be.
Just get rid of the number one.
Is all the only response.
Page fifteen, number four, for materials. I don't think you may, I think you can have that statement without. In the area.
I'm noting private policies, we do have an A section under header such as page twelve. I can't remember the list of. Uh page twelve, section seven, A has been B.
Yeah.
I'll just make a note for eventual approval of formatting changes in the route that works through.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other?
You go back to that last one, please. What was, what was the note there?
Page twelve.
Page twelve, seven, A.
Page twelve, seven, damage or lost, get rid of A. The proposals, any.
Any other? Questions? Displays and exhibits, exhibits, displays, things and citizens, please.
Displays and exhibits.
We had this approved by council last year and then we have um wanted to amend a couple of areas. One, we wanted to include a section about information tabling. We get a lot of organizations that want to set up tables, the um just informed customers that come in. So we wanted to make sure we had rules for that. Uh wanted to clarify the language about library advertising of events and services. That used to be number three, um section three, but we wanted to change that to library bulletin boards because ultimately that's what that was covering with bulletin boards. And in this past year, we've noticed that that language has confused a lot of our customers. So if we just change it to what it is, I think it will help clarify a lot of the confusion associated with putting stuff up on the bulletin board. And then we wanted to add fundraisers. Um fundraisers, it is covered and E of things that we do not allow on the bulletin board as all, as far as like solicitations. Um but there's just been a lot of back and forth with um customers where they want to put a fundraiser up there for their organization and um it just having that language in there will help clear up a lot of confusion. And then the section for the information tabling of the library, that would be the addition to this policy.
I think we seen in your first recommendation, there's really something in you in that you have multiple spots talk about encouraging a broad spectrum of ideas and viewpoints, which I think is inherently incompatible if we say the library has to be viewpoint neutral. Disruptives tell them different.
Right.
And I think one action, the purpose of that first change in just compatible in a way that the displays and exhibits as currently written.
Yeah, agreed.
On that note, I think we already talked about this, but I would like to bring up again on item one E, library displays relating to divisive topics are to present multiple viewpoints using available Kyle Public Library collection materials. Um in that I, I do continue to have concerns that um people classify different topics as divisive. Um and it's possible that uh library displayed intent would be undermined by presenting multiple viewpoints on a topic that some might see as divisive, but the library did not intend that such. Did that make sense what I just said?
It did.
I agree and we put an intentionally provocative hypothetical on the table for discussion of if there's a a display that talks about the history of slavery in America, like if we had a display about that. Having to have a another viewpoint about the topic that is let's say positive slavery. Like I don't know that's the intent of what the policy is really trying to say. And I don't know that it's right to encourage that extreme of estates. And again, that top that hypothetical was intentionally provocative by illustrated. And that's why I think just for your point is trying to make if I'm not reading in too much of what you kind of say.
Yeah, yeah. Or if it's, let's say, something that is commonly accepted in a library such as Hispanic Heritage Month. Um there may be parties who would now feel that that is a divisive topic and want to advocate using this policy, the library's own policy for I guess, materials to be included that say we shouldn't have things like Hispanic Heritage Month. Um which could actually be, I don't know. I I and of course, the library may have materials that do say that because the library is expressing lots of different viewpoints, but I I just wonder, I guess all I'm saying is I wonder about potential unintended consequences of the wording of this uh specific point in this uh policy.
So what would a correction in your opinion be to take it out?
I mean, yeah, it doesn't D kind of, I mean, it's a little more vague in general, I guess, but it says, you know, endeavor to present a broad spectrum of ideas and variety of viewpoints. So.
So also the way that I'm interpreting this is it's more of a requirement of a display. Your display is required to show multiple viewpoints of a topic. Is 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 that what we're actually saying? That's the first question. Are we actually telling customers that if they have a display, you have to have multiple viewpoints?
These are displays that staff. Are we saying that staff have to create displays? Yeah, I think to that point, you just got rid of B. And then D is that we're more than endeavor to present much broad endeavor would not be required.
I agree. I can't think of what B adds aside.
I mean, I feel like I feel like the way it's written is just is flawed. I don't I don't feel like the idea is flawed. I feel like the way it's written is flawed. If you want to use a library materials that have multiple viewpoints, great. You can do it. Do you have to do it? No.
I have to go back at last year's, we discussed it last year. So I'm like, I remember this 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 discussion before we presented to council because that one that hasn't changed, but we can remove it if it's not going to add anything. Um we can go ahead and modify to remove that. Thank you, Jessica. Does anybody else see anything? Questions, concerns for this policy?
I've seen a lot of um information tabling policies that explicitly from a bit amplified sound at information tables. I don't know if that's something even one of these. Added to information tabling.
Add something about like able to find sounds for evidence.
Unless it's not, then ignore it.
Library use in general should cover that because we um don't let's see.
It's really catch on for any disruption to staff or patrons' use of the library.
Under which item of all those?
We would call that.
Page five, the very first line. Disruptable use of library services.
So they can have emphasis on as long as not too loud.
We have regular radio listeners here in the lobby.
And get back to. Yes, and donations. This will um cover gifts and donations. We interpreted donations as donations to the collection and if it's not to the collections. We interpreted that as a gift to the library. Um donations for the collections, we would then go back to the library collection development policy for what can be added to the collection and it would be the same restrictions as um items that we purchase.
For this for C, I feel like we're saying too much and we need to say. I think we should just, I think we can say the library has the right to refuse gifts, period.
Yep.
Well, this is one that Amy amended.
Oh, oh. And it should say do not. So the city attorney added that. I wonder why. She specifically tell, she's specifically calling it out and including.
And including those that are intended to express political viewpoints.
Oh, maybe it's.
I'm confused about the clause in the library's collection when explicitly it's not for items for adoption, but for gifts.
Always have to use.
It's B. I actually call that.
You can consult with her and see if he does it that say the board recommended, you know.
I'm sure she's got a legal reason to put it in there. I'm just wondering. I'm wondering why it's in there if she, you know, honed in on it. I would be curious.
We can always ask, yeah.
Yeah.
It's also curious in my mind that this is one of the two sections in which the library board is consulted. Other areas of policy, we do not have any kind of even advisory role except for in terms of such development and in terms of this section of dates. I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just noting that it is unique. And it is a discussion on the reason. I think it'd be helpful for this board and future iterations of the board to know why we have a outside role in that section of policy.
That was um. Yes, this was this uh this one was pulled from one of the original procedures that was written a while ago and we actually cleaned it up a lot and I think the purpose of that was it um the moment was to give the library money um for something that was substantial. Um getting the board's approval as far as like if it's something of substantial. Um getting the board's approval as to how that would be spent or um something.
Well, some of the more outlandish gifts can be land art like that estates, things like that, people love their libraries. Wild things to them.
Is something like a book book. Consider a large enough condition to warrant that use of the language in a future donation. Or are we doing even that as too minimal for this type of situation?
I think there's the difference between what the friends of the library which have this connection in some special relationship versus someone leaves something suspiciously beneficial. So I see that more of a checks and balances where the director comes to you all and seeks your guidance, opinion input. Just like something with reconsideration as well that I'm coming to you all and having you weigh in on that the friends.
The administration board.
Any other questions? The next policy is the study rooms policy. Rooms total, specifically one day. We have more than one. Um we have the study room use and it will go through um who needs the study room or used for. It's one D, we've got patron there. We could change the customer.
And yet that customer adult or juvenile, didn't call them juvenile.
I is no one under the age of thirteen. Which I think does that, I think otherwise we had. Then in N O P and Q, something happens in N.
There's like an A that is not in the right place and then I think O P and Q are all supposed to be. Oh, reinforced, so yeah, understand. So it's sort of like, oh, there it is. And then these guys should be.
I want them to know I have multiple people check this. Multiple people.
You made a comment, Jessica. Beginning of this, that we currently have one study. And the policy says we get one study. With eyes on the future, we may one day have more day.
Yeah.
Should we remove the determinative language there of there being a singular entity? That way it gives you flexibility in the future. Should there be remodeling, expansions, whatever you pick. The library can designate study rooms.
Thank you.
Study rooms can be whatever.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, we.
The library can designate study rooms and as a result, I hope very soon we can.
And that would be based on council.
Every time it is now too.
We're here to ask for a report.
Which in theory they funded the other room, so like they would know, but.
I think um C under study room is needs an article on a study room. They'd be utilized. Instead of just studying.
We already took out all the good standings, right?
All the good standings.
Yeah, there's a comment for us. Any other comments, suggestions?
When you meant to four individuals that are assigned in the study room, is that just with regard to how much?
And it will accommodate uh for that uh perhaps wearing wheelchairs or other accommodations, but it will because of the square footage and the footprint for it would be it. It's not a small meeting room for five plus.
Okay. If my library staff are facilitating the the turnover.
The checkout. We check it out with your library card. And you can check it back, check it in. And we have markers that you check out as well, so we ask that you only use our markers in the green room. And then we are able to collect uh circulation stats for its usage.
I don't see it and maybe my eyes are crossing. Is there food and drink allowed in the study rooms?
It's not allowed. It's not allowed in the library.
The library at all. I think it would be appropriate to reiterate that in this section.
What if we referenced section five of the library use policy standard? And that way, if there's an exception due to a library sponsored event, that you're not in contact.
Still literally, can we add that they must check it back in?
Yes, because then we know it's vacated. Is it saying here that it doesn't have to be checked back in?
It doesn't mention.
I think it's the assumption that when they're finished, they would let us know, but we would also see it vacated. And then if then the staff would internally check it in, it will disappear after an amount of time. And it would of course be overridden if the next person checks it out, but it's nothing that can ever become overdue or so it's an internal mechanism that would check it back out of back in to be out released from the account.
So if you just ghost, then that's.
Yep. Especially if we're already busy and they finish, but most of the time as a courtesy, they will let us, that's the way study rooms go, they'll let us know and.
I think y'all talked already about getting rid of the term patron.
You all ready? The next one is the meeting rooms. Um this will establish meeting room reservation and fees, some of use accountability. In this one, um we do have meeting room procedures set in place and it is very similar to this policy.
In the first paragraph, meeting rooms, um we need these catheters. In the seconds, I have one, meeting room reservation piece D. Then maybe that's supposed to be bullets or after the call. Not sure. I actually. No, it's fine.
In that first sentence, we specify capacity at fifty. Is that different from fire code limitations? And if so, why is the designation at fifty? Check out that.
The fire code is um greater than fifty, but it doesn't take into account tables and chairs. So um when you take into account tables and chairs, fifty is what you can seek comfortably in these two rooms to get um each separate. Separated.
So thinking of like we had the book sale from the friend group and we had this area, there were more than fifty people, so I guess it would be a hundred total.
The fire code is. The fire code is have it in email. It is. It is a lot greater. It's a lot greater.
But we are intentionally trying to limit use to fifty. Thank you.
More often they want the tables and they want the chairs. Um. And yeah, even trying to get to the angles, tables and chairs, we quite tight.
There are extra space in libraries, the first library on the first line.
Do you want to tell the minimums or community?
Another on the website is community rooms.
Great question because there's uh some permanent signage out there that says that we're converting community rooms. Um. But common language, people call it meeting rooms. Um, and it's always been kind of gymnastics, talking to people about the community rooms versus the meeting rooms.
Oh, yeah, I know in terms of use, that's community rooms.
And that's what makes it a challenge is people know those meeting rooms.
And it just kind of helps clarify. Um. But there are like the individual purpose will have groups lined by meetings days.
So do we want to change them all to meeting and remove community?
The permanent signage that says community.
So we have to have that changed.
What if instead we had meeting rooms, parentheses, community rooms? That way we use that term to change it. It's not great, but it allows us not to tear down.
Right.
I mean, I I kind of like it. They call it community rooms because it you don't have to have a meeting in them. I mean, it's a meeting or anything, something like this, but you could reserve it for some other reason, right? I mean, I if you want to be married here, you could um get married here, right?
You know, only good to.
Up the bidding people.
There's no, there's no guest list. Open interpretation.
Well, it had to be a special kind of wedding, I guess.
It's so just that your rotation has actually changed everything to community rooms. So we have no meeting rooms.
I I'm tired, which is where the wedding. I apologize for the wedding comment. That was my personal like wedding fantasy, like married in library. But I do think that meeting is more specific than community room. And if the sign outside says community room. I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm I'm cool with it being community room because I think meeting is narrowing rather than opening the.
The reason another reason it's meeting is we get a lot of individuals that call up here um that want to find a space. And it's for their dual use and um then having it as a meeting room kind of helps explain that it's not for individual use. It's for groups, but I'm not married one way or the other. To.
So it's not for individual.
Well, it it's not for individual use. It is for groups, organizations.
What is honor of location?
Groups, organizations. It's a meeting room.
Meeting room.
Does it say somewhere that it it can't be for individuals?
Res reservations can be made by groups residing in or serving Hayes County. It's under a meeting room reservations and fees.
But what is a group? More than one. Right home. What's your minimum? Is there a minimum?
There is not a minimum.
Could it be meeting slash community rooms at a time?
That's what I was thinking. It's just then we use them interchangeably as needed for the event because we also call the program room internally. And that's what people are saying going story time at the program room. They don't talk about the meeting or community. So we could just do slash community room.
I like that. I mean. I think it's simple.
So ready for parentheses.
Slash.
Okay.
Anything else? The next policy is the maker space policy for eventual maker space. And it's the general policy. Procedures, guidelines, maker space materials and tools. Protection of patron and intellectual property. How do you say this word?
We're all tired now.
Thank you. Thank you. I was like, oh, my eyes went cross eyed.
Is K P L, is that an acronym that will be used or will that be changed? Because this is the first time that we've seen it.
We very well could call that space the K P L maker space. A lot of they have called them um Flugerville calls there's the flu lab. So it's very specific to that section of the library and that there will be a subset from here that's an agreement that they sign that has to do with copyright P uh. It's patent and the C F E S.
And so patrons and then also the age, the fourteen and up. So.
We'll do the twelve.
Well, yeah.
On page twenty three. Part B. And they found that the West Moat Southern Public Library.
I'm sorry, you're on page twenty three?
Yes.
B. Okay.
Uh, towards the bottom, you further reserved the risk knowledge of the West Lake.
West Lake. Where? There we go.
I'm sure we copy and paste it then.
We borrowed.
Patron.
Wow, how did the sweet night of his.
No, I just copied and pasted.
Thank you.
Sure. Um. Mary, what were your recommendations for this space?
Just the patrons. Um, they they the age thirteen and up, you know, some of the general policy gone and under procedures.
Twelve.
Oh, yeah, even in S, it's both.
You just tell.
Yeah.
Um, both are both like two different.
Well, but I mean, I guess that's because there is. I mean, is it twelve and under or over twelve?
That's one I think it's there. It says thirteen, the seventeen, seven.
Right.
They have thirteen, two seventeen.
So are we leaving the thirteen? Or are we changing it to twelve as well?
If I'm on my twelve birthday, do I get to come to the library by myself or do I have to have a parent?
Um, on your twelfth birthday. You can come without a parent. A child under the age of twelve must be a complete virus obstacle parent.
They don't see across the policies. That's the cutoff point for whatever the new laws wealth on my twelfth birthday.
Getting the list.
Yeah.
My European.
Right?
And with that as well, the fee, any fees associated with this will be the fee schedule with council. And the only fee I foresee in the immediate future would be fulfillment. That is, but the to use the machines would not have a fee involved, but for an actual supply. So if you're utilizing the pie cut, the cricket, you would bring your own paper. To utilize the sewing machine, you would bring your own materials. We will likely provide the needles so that the right needle is happening to sew the right material, but the filament is an actual product that they would pay and we'll weigh that out as we get closer. Some do by the hour, some by the ounce. And we'll we'll work through that.
And I don't see where we reference the Kyle. So it's be scheduled.
We. No, but it does say um. It's in H, uh, two procedures, H. Maker space machines that have an associated fee for use include three D printer. And that would just be a detailed fee can be found listed with the fee policy. And that will be just for that filament. You cannot use the three D printer without fill.
As long as it's called whatever we. We call it three D schedule.
Okay.
So you don't have a fee policy that people.
I think that's the city's.
Mm hmm.
So we add.
We'll make sure we're consistent though.
Anything else? Strip the maker space. Our last policy is the lost and found policy. That's just a general policy for items that are left at the library.
We have a section about upholds the principles of the American Library Association under lost and found. Should that be under?
Those are the ends. Um, just sort of. Ends. Yeah.
Do you want to title it something?
Yeah.
A L A.
Is that better uh slotted into the library use policy at the end of that? Does that tie it into this is the ideals and purpose of the library and its general codes and ethics that we adhere to?
We just had it in the end of the packet. Um, but we can label it to um the clarification. So library, put it there to library use.
They're typically at the end of all policies as those exhibit one, two, three, type that. So there. But we can definitely give it a header.
Do you have um a policy or procedure internally to determine an estimated cost? Because some things may look like they're not very expensive, but they could be well paid sometimes.
Are you trying to for the makers, the three D? No, I think that's going to be truly, if somebody leaves their Apple Watch, that's going to be obvious. Um. But it's just more of a, we know the value internally of some of an item. That's why we put that in there. That was something we added is that we will try to be fair is what something might be of value.
Um, this has happened. Um, somebody left a wallet with cash. And so um something like that will take to Kyle Police Department. When we go through the lost and found items, um, the supervisors will be the ones if anyone is questioning like does this, does this have a significant value? Then they would obviously like bring it to our attention so we can make that call. Um. When we leave things with the police department too, they they do are pretty good about telling us if it's of that value or not.
One of the reasons I mentioned is that some things are surprisingly weirdly expensive that you wouldn't think of.
Mm hmm.
Um. Ironically, like a pen. I've seen some pens worth around three hundred and sixty dollars and I mean, it's outrageous, but if that item was left and lost and you didn't think about it, discarded it. If you knew the value and you took it to the police to handle, wouldn't they do with the over hundred dollar items? Does it go into some sort of charity fund? Do they auction?
Do you know what happens to them once we take them there? They just become their responsibility.
Mm hmm.
And I assume they would put it into like their evidence locker and then they wait in custody and that. I don't know. So if anybody ever claimed that and then I I know the PD has a policy of how they deal with evidence and how long they keep it and how they dispose of it. If someone lost a pin like that, it would just be really all the PD to track down is you know, who who belonged to.
I I saw that. I thought, well, I'd be determined for some things.
Yeah.
I think internally we just have to be cognizant of due diligence and a few of us looking eyes on it and doing maybe some research as well.
Google's helpful.
Google's helpful. Yeah. And the dollar amount was um suggested by our um our attorney as well because it was vague language. Um. But having a dollar amount really kind of sets a criteria. But then that way, most of the time it's water bottles. Somebody can leave a Stanley and they can say, that was valuable. Um. And we will, you know, um, we try our best to hold on to things, but then things start piling up. So.
Yeah, the water bottles are the big ones, but someone leaves a ring, a bracelet, a phone, a wallet, they're calling us immediately or coming right back with us. Can I tell you? But um.
Car keys.
Car keys. But sometimes there's a teddy bear and we put that in.
Yeah.
Put that in their way. They will be the blind fee or something like that. But then we'll also find a random shoe or pet earbuds.
Your car keys. I I still don't get that.
If they. They're separate.
Yeah, well, if someone drove them and then.
The app goes.
Yeah.
Did you get it?
And that is the policy packet.
I think it would be cool if the last sentence actually like said where you sent that email to. Uh, I know that may not be possible because you wouldn't want to use someone's name, but if there isn't an email account.
Oh, list it. Okay.
That would be.
The reason it wasn't listed um is because if directors ever change out, assistant directors ever change out, we would have to updating that. There is a generic um library admin email address, but it is one that just receives invoices and it doesn't, we can't respond from anything. Um.
We can make an email address if that made.
No, we have one. We have one, but if we um, it's just for like, yeah, receiving.
Let's. And then we could forward it to one of us and then we can't forward it.
We can make so alias so that they email it, then it it emails to that.
We can't.
Think that can be produced in time to go to council approval?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Thank you very much.
I'm impressed you guys. All right. Um, so if we are ready to approve this packet as discussed, modified, notated. Okay.
Because you, I think you're taking notes for us, right? So let me know if I need to slow down or repeat anything.
Um, I have done. Are you just going straight down the?
I'm gonna make a motion and list out the changes for consideration. And from a process standpoint, it's going to go to the city of China. Pending for approval, it would go to council. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, motion to approve the policies as amended following city attorney review and approval, noting the following amendments. So updating section one of the library use policy regarding uh limited public form and disruptive behavior. Section seven to amend to twelve years of age. Amending membership and library card section one to include with and restructuring the photo ID section. Amending section three regarding the locked cars as the operative phrasey mayor. Renumbering section two. Amend to change Kyle Public Library and referencing library where appropriate, consistent throughout the document. Change good standing to not blocked throughout the document. Circulation policy to change to not check out if any of. Amending tech share to remove restricted. Move the hotspot section. Section nine, uh change for staff discretion. Tech share policy and restricted section. Adjust section two A and B to refer to card holder. Interlibrary loan section two to change to card holder, not customer. Change the patron confidentiality policy to be customer confidentiality policy. Amend the display and exhibit policy to remove uh section five, part B. Amend the study room change uh to child and customer as the language. Amend age to twelve years for changes in authority. Reframe section M, remove the singular use of that room. Meeting room policy. Uh reformat section five of library use. Um we're going to on the meeting room, have that meeting room and community maybe used jointly. Maker space policy, changing patrons to customer, amending language on age from twelve and up, or to twelve and up. Correcting the name of the library, referencing the fee schedule. Adding in a header to the library principles that are the URL links at the bottom of that last page. Adding a contact to the lost and found policy. And then reformatting, making spelling changes and capitalization changes throughout document as a.
Have a motion. So approved. Thank you. Okay. If there, is there anything else? From anyone? No? If not, we can adjourn at nine twelve P M.
Thank you all so very, very much.
That's me. That's me.